We'll call the meeting to order, please. We'll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson. Dokken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start this meeting, I think I'd like to say welcome to Sean Christensen. And Charlene, would you like to say a word?
Sean Christensen is our new Public Works Director and City Engineer. He started with the city on Thursday. He comes to us after having been the city engineer for the city of Pow Wyoming, and we're very glad to have him here.
Thank you very much. Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have one underneath, "New Business," please.
Okay. And I have one under "New Business." Are there any others? To approve the consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. Any discussion? Councilman? Councilwoman?
Mayor Yanish, I just had a question on the Planning Commission minutes. I wondered if they would just where the access offer from 19th Avenue would be for the new Aldi grocery store. I just wondered if someone could comment on that. I had a question about that.
Sure.
Councilmember Nelson, members of the council. The proposed access for Aldis is at the far west end of their property on 19th Avenue.
Okay. Is that about halfway down between?
Yeah, that's a pretty fair assessment, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Scheduled hearings. Kathy Aho, would you like to speak to that, please? We will open the public hearings if there are any discussion from the audience. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The first item for this hearing is an ordinance authorizing issuance of $1,205,000 in general obligation bonds. There we go. Improvement bonds. The purpose of the hearing this evening, and just by way of background for the people in the audience, in order to incur debt of any type, the city has to go through an ordinance process, and this would be the second step in that process. The first was the reading of the ordinance and the setting of the public hearing back on March 3rd. The hearing has been published, and the public hearing this evening is to consider the issuance of the debt. The debt would be to advance three of the five improvement projects proposed for 2014. The remaining two projects do not need debt in order to fund them, and we're going to be asking that the council consider a resolution adopting the ordinance and calling for it to be published. That will enable you to borrow up to $1,205,000 to complete these projects, and if needed, levy taxes for all or portion of that debt. After the ordinance is published, a 15-day period has to expire during which petition can be received. If none is received, the city then has the authority to issue the debt. These particular projects. There we go. Oops. My apologies. I've got frumble fingers tonight, I guess. The three particular projects we're talking about are 1401, 1403, and 1404 for reconstruction, overlay, and new construction, respectively. You can see, starting at the top there, a good deal of these portions are intended to be supported by assessments, some of it also from the City Community Investment Fund, Public Works Reserve. Those two components total $1,204,000 in our business. That rounds to a $5,000 number, or $1,205,000. That would be the bonded portion of the project. State MSA funds would provide another almost $470,000, some money from the Utility Commission, and some money from the wastewater treatment plant. The use of funds below, it's listed as other services, but there are a number of construction items that go on as a part of those projects, and I know that you've had numerous meetings before where you've considered them in detail. There we go. The key financing dates this evening is the public hearing. Bids for the construction will be received May 6th. On the 19th, we will be back. This evening's action does not commit the council to issue debt. It simply enables you to do that, but on the 19th, we will come back with specific terms of the bond sale for your consideration. If you decide to move ahead at that time, we would receive bids on the bonds on the 16th of June, and the proceeds will be received sometime in July in order to help fund those Those were the only formal comments I had this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this point, do I hear a motion? I close the public hearing, I'm sorry. I close the public hearing to the public and turn it over to the council if they have any questions or counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the... Ordinance.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, I'm sorry. Adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish it. That would be a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A roll call?
It will be, sir.
Okay. Do you have a...
Do we have questions, or you never took questions from the audience either? Kathy, what would be the anticipated interest rate on these bonds?
If you bear with me for a moment, I think I do have that here. The market has continued to be pretty good. The volume for municipal bonds is down this year, and there's been an increasing supply lately, or increasing demand lately for municipal bonds in the funds, but if you'll hold just for a moment. These numbers are a little dated now, but we had been projecting just over 2% for that bond issue. So we'll refresh those numbers prior to your action on the 19th.
Any further comments?
And here are a lot of comments and rumblings out of Washington that they want to repeal the governmental tax bonds, make them taxable, or tax-free bonds, make them taxable. What kind of impact would that have on the interest rate if that were to happen?
Councilmember DeBleek.
I'm sure that's kind of a projection question.
It is. There are taxable municipals out there. It's a rather steep increase in the interest rate. It varies dependent on the term of the transaction, but you're probably looking at at least 1% on this type of an issue.
At least another percentage point.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Ms. Aho, would you like to explain number two to us, the second hearing that we have? I will open the public hearing if there are any questions or comments afterwards. Let's talk about that.
See if I can get these buttons any better. There we go. Okay. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider an ordinance authorizing issuance of up to $3 million of a general obligation revenue note, Series 2014A. And again, the purpose of the hearing is to authorize the council to issue debt, and again, the specific details of any debt that you incur will be brought back to you at a later date for approval. The ordinance requires, in this case also, that a public hearing be held and a publication of the ordinance occur. The debt in this case is proposed to fund certain improvements to the city's wastewater treatment system. And again, we'll be asking that you consider a resolution adopting the ordinance and calling for it to be published. That will be necessary to enable the council to borrow up to $3 million for the project. And again, the ordinance will be effective 15 days following publication if no petition is received. There were, I don't have a spread of numbers for you. I understand that bids have been received on this project and that they are going to be considered by some of the other committees of the council prior to coming back, but on June 13th, the council did conduct a sewer rate hearing, and that was following a quite extended amount of time and work that was spent looking at the sewer rate structure. And you adopted new sewer rates at that time. Those rates included provisions for certain future capital improvements, and those improvements included this project. And I did review those numbers. The costs that are currently projected for this project, even at the $3 million level, are quite a bit less than those that were included in the sewer rate study, so that if you were to enter into this transaction, even up to the $3 million level, that portion of debt has been more than covered by the rates that were put into place. So I just thought that that would be something that you would be wanting to know this evening as you consider this action. That concludes my, any comments I had on this item, Mr. Mayor?
Are there, thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience? I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move staff's recommendation to assign it a number and publish it.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to assign a number and publish, adopt the ordinance, assign a number and publish it in the amount of $3 million. Am I correct on that?
Up to.
Up to $3 million. This is a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. We have Megan DeShepper. Would you please explain to us municipal code chapters 6.5 and 12, because both of solid waste. At this point, we will open the public hearing.
Mayor Yanish, we're going to tag-team this one.
Okay.
A while back, the council appointed a task force to deal with solid waste issues. Megan DeShepper was the staff person that led that task force. After several months of work, the task force has come back to the council with a variety of changes to the municipal code, and those are detailed in the ordinance that you have in your packet this evening. The ordinance was prepared by the city attorney and reflects the changes made by the task force. There are very few financial impacts from these changes, other than staff time and how these solid waste issues are dealt with by staff and the council, and that's the administrative side of it. If you want the technical side of it, Megan can field those questions.
Are there any other comments from the audience? I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council. Are there any comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, move we adopt, assign a number, and publish.
Second.
Do you second it, or do you...
I did.
Okay.
I have a question, though.
Okay. Let's ask the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Megan and Bruce, this task force came to us as a request from some downtown business owners. It wasn't staff that wanted to do anything. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
General public.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Enforcement of this, is it done on a complaint basis, or somebody walk around and make sure it's enforced, or...
We will for sure react to any complaints that we would get. If there's something that we observe in our regular daily inspections and things of that nature, we'll take care of it at that time as well.
So if the building inspector is driving around and he sees something out of place?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments? Councilman Ammon.
Thank you. Thanks for the people that served on the task force, came up with these recommendations. I read over thoroughly, and I agree with it. My question is, has staff received any other complaints prior to this hearing?
Regarding garbage?
The garbage in those areas?
Yes.
Do you know how many approximately?
We field complaints every week.
Okay. So it's still ongoing?
Yes.
Okay. And the people have been advised to clean up? They still haven't been? Okay. Thank you.
Under the changes allowed by this ordinance, the community service officers would have the authority to issue citations as well.
Thank you. Do you have a... We have the, do we have a motion on the table?
We do.
Where's that? Yes, sir. If discussion is done.
Discussion is done. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Megan. That being said, we will go into the...
One more, sir.
Public hearing. We have attending zoning ordinance sections, shipping, storage containers, and that would Kevin?
No. Megan DeShepper and Bruce Peterson will also provide information on that one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, this is an issue that the Planning Commission dealt with over the course of several meetings. Megan led discussion about the problems that we sometimes see regarding shipping and storage containers in the residential neighborhoods. The Planning Commission arrived at some reasonable conclusions and prepared a proposed draft to the zoning ordinance. Those changes are in your packet also. The primary change would be that these shipping and storage containers could not be allowed as permanent structures, and that they would be limited in time to no more than one month's time for moving purposes, or for three months' time for storage of construction projects or improvements for a project that's going on that site. It's the staff recommendation that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published, and Megan can certainly address the technical questions, should you have any.
I open this hearing up to the public. Is there any comments at all? That being said, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Do we have questions? Question, Councilman Ammon.
Yeah. Just curious, all this came about, Bruce and Megan. Could you give us an update?
It was really introduced by the Planning Commission themselves. They've seen it going on in other communities, and they thought we should be prepared should it become an issue in the future.
It's a proactive move. Thank you.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we get many complaints on this in the city? Storage containers that are sitting in somebody's yard are more than a month? Is it...
We have had to enforce a couple of different instances where they've had the, like the multimodal steel shipping containers brought on sites in residential areas. They are still allowed in commercial and industrial areas, but a lot of cities are starting to see them being used as permanent backyard sheds, and we didn't think that was the type of storage shed architecture we wanted in our residential neighborhoods.
Right. I understand.
So the Planning Commission jumped on that.
Then in, like over in High Avenue, since it's where I have a warehouse, is that they're allowed there, just not in residential areas, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. And then the complaint basis, again, that's how it's going to be handled? Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion on that? This is a resolution as well? Roll call.
Councilmember Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And then motion carries. At this point, we'll open it up to the open forum. Is there someone to speak? Good. Carolyn Jorgensen?
Yes.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Carolyn Jorgensen, 1508 Third Street Northeast, Wilmer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Carolyn Jorgensen, and I'm an RN at Rice Memorial Hospital and a certified women's healthcare nurse practitioner. My husband, Joe, and I have lived in Wilmer since 1985, and I've worked at Rice Memorial Hospital since then, except for a year when we moved to Florida and another 11 months when I took another job. I've been a nurse since 1978. I was four years old when I graduated, so, yeah. And have worked many different positions: public health, general surgical nursing recovery room, and I've even taught nursing. I'm currently an OB nurse on women's and children's care, and I'm chair of our unit's shared governance committee on the COTI Committee, which is Catheter Associated Urinary Tract Infections, the Housewide Coordinating Council, and I am also on the Minnesota Nurses Association Board of Directors. I'm an RN3 at Rice Hospital, having achieved that level by doing extra projects and work at the hospital, and I'm a trained SANE nurse, which is Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner. I won first place in Rice Hospital's Safety Fair in 2012 for my work with and development of an algorithm in a cart to treat postpartum hemorrhage in a newly delivered woman, in addition to winning a couple of statewide awards from the Minnesota Nurses Association. I absolutely love and live nursing, as does my husband and family, having lived through my rotating shifts, night shifts, holidays worked, weekends, and getting calls at all hours of the day and night when the hospital needs help. For example, before I came today, they were already calling. I believe Rice Memorial Hospital has some of the most dedicated, intelligent, and professional nurses and staff that I have ever worked with, and the patients get the best nursing care around. But I am here tonight because I am concerned things could quickly change. The nurses of Rice Memorial Hospital are deeply concerned about the tone set by management's concessionary proposals made in negotiations with those of us represented by the Minnesota Nurses Association. The underlying message delivered indicates a disrespect for the value nurses provide in delivering quality care to our friends and family. We are dedicated to taking care of all the grandmas and grandpas, moms and dads, and children who live in our community. My coworkers and I take pride in delivering my neighbors' babies here and comforting your ailing aunts and uncles when they are in need. This community-based hospital allows us to care for not just patients, but our own friends and families. We also caution that should those proposals take effect, the consequences to our beloved community could be dire. When seeking concessions of this magnitude while other facilities continue to increase investments in the wages and benefits of the nurses, Rice Memorial could become a revolving workforce store. This situation only serves to compromise the continuity of care. It will likely prove to be an economic mistake due to higher retention and recruitment fees. Each time a nurse is replaced, the organization pays the equivalent of at least a year's salary in expenses. That just doesn't make common sense. We ask you to invest in the people who care for those who are at their most vulnerable. Keep the highly skilled registered nurses here in their own community. Don't force nurses to leave Rice Memorial because the hospital no longer offers a competitive wage and benefit package. Rice Memorial Hospital will be investing $45 million over the coming five years to maintain infrastructure, rebuild units in the hospital, and purchase new equipment. The investment will keep the hospital viable and offer every patient the best care possible. The same type of long-term investment is also needed to retain and recruit hospital staff. Wages and salaries for registered nurses at Rice Memorial have fallen far behind comparable hospitals in this region and the state. We feel as though Rice Hospital in this community are one big family. Please support nurses who want to stay here, work here, and care here. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole? If you would give it three minutes, please.
Sure. I think it's less than three minutes.
Okay.
Mine is much shorter. Dear City Councilmembers and Mayor Yanish, my name is Nicole Magus. I am a registered nurse at Rice Memorial Hospital. I'm also a wife, mother, and mother of two little girls. I have lived in Wilmer since graduating from nursing school in 2005, and I started my career as a registered nurse on the adult healthcare unit at the hospital. I am currently a registered nurse and unit coordinator on the women's and children's unit, and I am also a certified lactation counselor there. I also am a member of Vindie Church and the YMCA in the community. I feel passionate about nursing, and I believe that Rice Memorial Hospital has some of the most caring, thoughtful, and hardworking nurses and staff. The patients always come first for us. But I am here tonight because I know it will not stay that way if management thinks more about profits than patients. The nurses of Rice Memorial Hospital are worried about what will happen to our families if the concessions the hospital is demanding go through. Why isn't my family's health coverage as important as theirs? If the top administrators decide the $750 insurance deductible is what they deserve, shouldn't the nurses who take care of the sick and dying, the newborns, the children, the mentally ill, and every other type of patient that walks through our doors in this town have the choice for that plan as well? We do feel as though Rice Hospital and this community are one big family, and we are asking for your support for nurses who want to stay here and work here and care for patients here. We hope you do not need us, but we want to be there for you if you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the council? Are there any comments from the council? At that point, we'll take this for information. We will take a quick break. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one comment.
Go ahead.
If I could. Charlene, could we put this issue along with the annual discussion we have with the Rice Memorial Hospital and Wilmer Municipal Utilities to discuss negotiation strategies as called for by state statutes? I think we've done that in the past, just to have an update, and if we could do that...
We can ask Rice Hospital to give an update, yes.
Either have the representatives from Rice, the staff people, or people that serve on the board. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
We will take a five-minute, if there's any more questions, any more comments. We'll take a short break, and then we'll move into the presentation from Kristy Kurth. We'll take a short break, five minutes. We'll be back here. Thank you.
Churches, local businesses, and organizations. Through the Feeding America Program, WAFS receives over 4,000 pounds of, 400,000 pounds annually of food. Last year, we distributed over a million pounds of food. That's a lot of food. And to kind of put it in perspective, one semi truck holds approximately 30,000 pounds of food. That means that we distributed 34 semi trucks of food to those in need. Now, our food shelf holds approximately, at any given time, we have approximately 60, 50 to 60,000 pounds of food. So, that really says, what comes in, goes out. You know, we don't have a huge storage space, but we do have enough on hand and rotate enough that as we get food from second harvest or through donations, it's really what comes in and goes out. It's amazing to know how much food goes through that little building over on Pacific Avenue. And we could not do all that we do for our community without the support of over 100 volunteers. Between the three locations, we have approximately 50 to 60 regular volunteers and then an additional 40 volunteers that kind of ebb and flow. We do work with community service, STS. We also work with other organizations, churches as well, and just individuals that come in that want to help out, help in their community. Last year, we had 14,900 hours of volunteer work. That is equivalent to 7.2 full-time employees with a value of $326,000. And that is according to the independent sector study where they put value on volunteer hours. That's a lot of money, a lot of hours, that people in our community are giving to the food shelf. Minnesota Food Share Month is in March, our big fundraising. There's been lots of articles in the paper, we have been in the seasons publication, also radio, and we have two big events that are coming up. The first one is one that has been going on for several years that is sponsored by Lakeland Broadcasting, and that is Radio for Relief on March 28th. Many organizations throughout our community right now are fundraising for us, whether it's churches, individual organizations, or businesses. And on that day, it is an awesome sight to see those individual churches and groups come in and deliver what they have collected throughout the month of March for the food shelf. Our goal this year is $200,000 and 50,000 pounds of food, and we are looking forward to that event. It's once again being held at the Wilmer Fire Station from 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. All of the Lakeland Broadcasting channels will be airing live that morning from that location, and I do invite you to come out and experience the community coming together for our organization. And a new event that we are hosting this Thursday, the 20th, is called Chili Fest. And we have asked some of our local heroes from Candy Ojai County to be a part of this event. It's Be the Hero, Fight Hunger. Our local Wilmer Fire Department, Police Department, and ambulance, along with New London Fire Department, Atwater Rescue Team, one of the schools, and I don't know all the teams, but we have a total of 11 teams that will be competing against one another in a chili cook-off. And we will also have a chili dinner. It's a free will donation out at the Wilmer Community and Activity Center from 5:00 to 7:00, and I do invite you to come out and have dinner and vote for the best chili. We have three local mayors from other communities coming in to do the judging. We've really reached out to our neighboring small towns because the food shelf is not just a Wilmer food shelf. This food shelf is for Candy Ojai County, and we serve at least one individual in every single community in our county. And so, we've asked some of the other communities like Lillian, Atwater, Penox, Raymond, to come and help us out, and they've all said, "Yep, we will." And so, we're going to have a great mixture of different communities being represented at the Chili Fest this Thursday evening. So, I do invite you guys to come out as well. And just two more quick things. Just reminder that we try to reach out into the community in innovative ways to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our neighbors. We work with the United Way Salvation Army, the HAWK program, 4-H, to bring the backpack program during the summer with a Gromo bill. We reach out to five of the smaller communities as well as here in Wilmer, and we distribute approximately 72 backpacks every Friday for the 12 weeks of summer. We also work with the ACGC School District and do a backpack program with them, and we distribute 32 backpacks twice a month to families in need. We also are doing right now a senior and shut-in delivery program. It's kind of a pilot program where we've reached out, especially this winter with it being so icy and snowy, some of our seniors and some of our individuals that have a hard time getting around even find it more difficult in the winter. So, we've put together a program where if they need our assistance, we have volunteers that will actually deliver their order to their home and help them out, and that just runs during the winter months. Some of them do have help through other programs, and some of them don't. And so, that's really who we're trying to reach out to is, those that don't have assistance with PAs or with other organizations. So, we really look at ways that we can help our neighbors in unique, innovative ways, and we're always looking if there's partnerships because we feel, our philosophy is that the community supports us. We need to support the community and be good partners and stewards of everything that is given to us, to the food shelf. So, I think that we are more than a food shelf. We really try to reach out and be that partner, community partner, because if it wasn't for the residents in our community in Candy Ojai County, we would not be able to serve our neighbors like we do. So, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I would be willing to answer.
Are there any questions from the audience? Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your report, Christie. It's something that the general public needs to know more about. And speaking of that, how do they find out about, you know, where the food shelf is? Do you advertise, or do you get referrals from the County Welfare Department or from other departments?
All of the above. We have information with, out at the county offices, we work with Heartland Community Action, United Way, 211. We also do have a Facebook site, a webpage, so people are able to go out there, whether they're individuals that need assistance, donors, they can go on that, supporters. We try and share a lot of information through our Facebook site and our website as well.
And do you have a number of seniors that come to then? I mean, is that a very large percentage of the people that come there?
Yep, we see approximately 120 households which are senior onlys. So, 1/8 of our visits in a month are senior-only households.
And they're able to get over there, or do some of them take the bus over there? Do people come by bus or other transportation?
Yep, seniors, what we've seen with seniors is a lot of them will come with somebody, whether it's another senior, or they ride-share. The bus, most of those individuals are more other disabilities, younger individuals that don't drive, and they use the cat bus.
For the benefit of the public, maybe you could tell them your address and where you're located?
Yes, thank you. We are at 624 Pacific Avenue. For those that have been in the community for a long time, we are kitty-corner from the back of the old Mr. B.'s building. And our phone number is (235) 2641. And for those that are on the internet, just Google or look up "Wilmer Area Food Shelf."
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Amon?
Thank you for being here. As far as the eligibility requirements, there is a certain criteria that they have to meet, but you're somewhat flexible on that policy, correct?
Correct. We follow the USDA guidelines. We are a USDA facility. We receive product from them. So, their guideline is 200% of poverty level. So, an individual has to make under $21,000 annually. A family of three, I believe it is $28,000 or $29,000 annually that they have to make under to qualify. Now, when they come in, if they make over that but have had some type of natural disaster, fire, if there's been something like that, or if they've had extreme medical bills, one family, for instance, has had, the father has been very sick, cancer, doctoring, and so forth. So, even though it appears like they would be, would not qualify because of other circumstances, we do help provide food for them.
Also, another quick question. You better understand, you know, I just want to say, I wish you didn't have a job.
I wish so too.
I really wish you didn't have a job. It'd be a better world if we could say that, but thanks for what you're doing. As far as the demographics, people come in, they have to be from within Candy Ojai County or be a resident of 30 days, or is this just given out if anybody shows up at the door, you might say, if they're staying in Candy Ojai County, or how does it work?
Again, we follow USDA policies, which states we cannot turn anyone away. So, when an individual or a family comes in, we do ask for proof of residency in Candy Ojai County and identification for the members in their household. If they cannot provide proof of residency, or if they're not from our county, we do serve them once. If they're outside of our county, we give them the information for the food shelf closest to them. For instance, if they would be from closer to Montevideo, we'd give them the Chippewa information so that they would have that and can go to that food shelf. We do have transit. So, out of all of them that we served last year, out of 10,000 households, less than 1% were out of our county. So, it's a very small number, actually.
That's good. That's the number I was looking for. So, the people that are donating to a good cause know that it's staying here to help their residents of Candy Ojai County.
Yes, that is correct.
That's very important. Thanks. Have you seen a big change? I mean, we're going through difficult times, all of us, businesses and individuals, employees. Have you seen, or do you take any census as to, as to the, I know you mentioned different minority groups and those percentages, but have you looked at the length of time people have been employed, or do you get into those types, that type of information, or have you been recording, or do you have any data on that so we have some sense of the health of our county?
Yep, we look more at their income levels. Let me just see if I brought that. What I can tell you is that what we've seen, even though our county's unemployment rate is approximately 4%, I believe that was the last number that I had seen, and our economy seems to be bouncing back, it's really the families or individuals, they're working. It's just that a lot of our jobs in our community are not livable wages. I have, know of several of my clients that work for $10 an hour, $9 an hour. They're very important jobs, and we need to have them. One organization, they have not seen raises for three years. Then, when they did get a raise in February, it's now being ate up because of health insurance costs, because the organization all of a sudden had a 16% increase to their insurance costs. And so, the organization did their due diligence and did end up finding new insurance, but it still was a 12% increase. So, the 3% increase that the employees got was ate up by their insurance. And that's the story we hear over and over, and I'm sure those that are in business know this, they hear that, they see it themselves. And so, those families are the families that, every month, they're, can we pay this bill, or we pay half that bill, and so forth, and they're juggling their money. And those are the ones that come in and see us three, four times a year when they really need us. We have a lot of jobs that are high education. I mean, you know, the hospital and the technology center. We have a lot of jobs that are less education, but we're missing those middle jobs that are paying the 12, $13 an hour. And so, it's those families that are struggling, that middle class, the lower-middle-class families. And that's really what we're seeing in our data too, is that it's that income level.
Thank you, because I think sometimes we live in our own bubbles. We don't really see it unless you're witnessing what's going on at the food shelf and you see it. So, I thought this would be my opportunity to ask you, and thank you for just sharing all that with me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have time for one more question. Councilwoman Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christie, thank you for coming. What number of churches participate in a similar kind of a program in our city? I know our church we attend has a large, how do we coordinate those activities, or do we?
Lots of them. I believe we have 43 or 48 churches in our county. We send out information to all churches at the beginning of January, asking them to do some type of program during the month of March. And I would guess a good half, if not three-fourths of them participate. I mean, we get a lot of funding from churches, and some of the very smallest churches are some of our biggest donors. So, I'm, you know, I'm very, I go to meetings around the state, and I am so happy to be able to say, "I'm from Candy Ojai County," and tell them what our churches, what our schools, what our businesses do for the food shelf. We are very blessed to be here.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. We will move into Labor Relations Committee report. Councilwoman Amon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Labor Relations Committee met Tuesday, March 4th. Those present were standing committee members, Steve, myself, Mr. Dawkins, Councilman DeBleek, and Tim Johnson. Others present were the, was the city administrator, Charlene Stevens, the chief of police, Dave Wyfels, Mary Lee Dorn, Kevin McGrath from LALS, and Brandon Fitzsimmons from Flattery and Hood. Item number one was, we called the meeting to order and there was no public comments. Item number two is the closed session pursuant to statutes 13D.05. Mr. Blake made a motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Christians to go into closed session to discuss a matter of internal affairs data relating to allegations of law enforcement misconduct. The meeting was closed at 5:00 p.m., and the meeting was reopened at 5:30 p.m. And it was, a motion was made and seconded, and at that time, Mr. McGrath and Mrs. Dorn left the meeting. Item number three, closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.05. A motion was made and seconded to go into closed session to discuss a matter of pending litigation. The meeting was closed at 5:35 p.m., and the meeting was reopened at 6:45 p.m. There'd be no further business before the committee. We adjourned at 6:47, and I will move to file the minutes. Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Committee meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor?
Opposed, say no. If I may, just, yes, you have a question?
If I may, yes, thank you. If I may correct the minutes here, we got down Tim Johnson as a member, and I was there, not Tim.
Yep, that is correct. Sorry about that. I noticed that as well when it was being read, so we'll get that corrected.
Unless I look like Tim, I guess.
Thank you.
I stand corrected on the, on the standing committee, too. I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. We will have the Finance Committee report for March 10th, 2014. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was, we called the meeting to order, followed by public comment, and there was no one there from the public that wanted to comment. The third item was to amend the 2014 Leisure Services Budget. Staff explained that just under $2,800 was expended recently from the 2014 Leisure Services Budget to upgrade some of the youth hockey equipment. Prior to this purchase, the Hockey Association expressed an interest in partnering with the city on the cost of the upgrade. Subsequently, the city has received donations of $1,000 from the Wilmer Blue Line Club and $550 from ACMC to help offset the expenditure. Staff is proposing that the 2014 Leisure Services Equipment Line item be increased by $1,550 to reflect these donations. It was noted that the ACMC donation of $550 was previously recognized by the council. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to increase the 2014 Leisure Services Equipment Expenditure Budget by $1,550 to reflect the donations as presented.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to increase the Leisure Services Equipment Expenditures Budget by $1,550 to reflect the donations as presented. Is there any discussion? And that is a motion or a roll call? Roll call, sir. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries?
The next item was talking about a snowblower purchase. Staff presented a request to purchase a snowblower for the Public Works Department for $158,225. This replaces the existing 1999 SnowGo snowblower that has, had been anticipated and planned for a replacement in the 2014 CIP. Rather than trade the old unit in for a credit of $20,000, it's recommended that it be retained to salvage numerous parts because their value far exceeds the trade-in value. It was noted that the 2014 CIP included $200,000 for the purchase of the snowblower, so a savings in excess of $41,000 will be realized in this transaction, not including the value of salvaged parts. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee to purchase the snowblower for $158,225 from McQueen Equipment and to retain the existing 1999 SnowGo snowblower for salvaged parts.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the purchase of the new snowblower for $158,225 from McQueen Equipment and to retain the existing 1999 SnowGo snowblower for salvaged parts. Is there any discussion? And that's a roll call? No, sir. A motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
After that discussion, we just commended staff for their vigilance in determining that the substantial cost savings of about $146,000 when they purchased the oil distributor recently, they came up with a good idea, and we wanted to recognize them for that. At that time, at this time, Councilmember Christiansen requested that proposed capital equipment purchases be brought to the Applicable Committee for Approval, as well as to the Finance Committee for Budget Approval. Concerns were raised about the additional process. This would involve, this matter will continue to be discussed. The fifth item was a public works garage door replacement. Staff presented a request to purchase two new garage doors and lifts for the public works garage. Two of the main doors in the garage have been failing for some time, and their replacement was anticipated and scheduled in the 2014 CIP. It was subsequently determined that due to ongoing increasing problems with the lifts, they both should be replaced as well. Total cost for replacement of two doors and two lifts is anticipated at $15,381.26. The 2014 CIP budgeted $10,000 for these two doors. It's proposed that $5,381.26 be reallocated from unspent funds from previously purchased dump trucks, which were part of the 2014 CIP as well. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution approving the purchase of two doors and two lifts from Overhead Door Company for a total cost of $15,381.26, and that $5,381.26 be allocated from unspent funds from the previously purchased dump trucks.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the purchase of the two doors and two lifts from Overhead Door Company for a total cost of $15,381.26, and that $5,381.26 be reallocated from unspent funds from previously purchased dump trucks. Is there any discussion? And that's a motion? No, sir. Roll. A resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries?
Item number six was a discussion about the fuel system. Staff explained that shortly after the new fuel pumps were installed at the public works garage in 2013, it became obvious that there were compatibility issues with the old software packages. These incompatibilities included some of the tank monitoring as well. Staff solicited proposals from three different firms to correct the problem and to make the system functional. It's recommended that the fuel system upgrade be completed by Minnesota Petroleum Services for $45,552.88. While this project was not part of the CIP, it's necessary nonetheless, and it's proposed that unused funds from the recent purchase of an oil distributor for the public works department be used for this upgrade. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution approving the fuel upgrade, system upgrade.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to upgrade the fuel system and for the total amount of $45,552.88. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries?
We had no old business and no new business, so unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made to file the minutes of the 2000, March 10th, 2014 minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. With that, we move into the Public Work Safety Committee report for March 11th. Mr. Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one, we called the meeting to order, and there was nobody there to speak under public comments, but I would like to again welcome Sean Christiansen here, the new city engineer. Item number three had to do with the Country Club Drive Lift Station, the design and construction related services. Staff again presented a recommendation to award a consultant contract to Bolton &amp; Mink for design and construction related services for the upcoming Country Club Drive Lift Station replacement. Staff had reviewed and scored two proposals, the other firm being TKDA out of Minneapolis. Bolton &amp; Mink achieved the highest total score, as well as the highest score for both technical capacity and price. It is anticipated that the design and planning work will be done in 2014. It is anticipated that the design and planning work will be done in 2014, with construction of that to follow in 2015. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, that a contract be ordered for the Country Club Drive Lift Station Design and Construction Related Services to Bolton &amp; Mink in the amount of $76,377.50, and that the mayor and administrator be authorized to execute the necessary documents. I will introduce that resolution.
Second.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced to have the construction related services to Bolton &amp; Mink in the amount of $76,377.50, and that the mayor and administrator be authorized to execute the necessary documents. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Next item on the agenda was the Midwest Lift Station/Lakeland Sewer Drive Project Contract Amendments. Once again, staff presented amendments to the engineering contract with Bowleg Inc. relative to the Midwest Lift Station and Lakeland Drive Sewer Project. Our committee first discussed amendment number three to the original contract involving work performed by Bowleg's Engineering Company in reviewing the sewer televising and doing design work for the portion of the project bid as cured in place pipe. We were informed by staff that the committee, that this work had already been done and to keep the project on schedule. After some discussion, another motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to approve amendment number three to Bowleg Inc. in the amount of $28,716, and to authorize our mayor and administrator to execute the contract amendment.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve amendment number three to the Bowleg Incorporated contract in the amount of $28,716, and to authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the contract amendment. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Staff then presented amendment number four to the Bowleg contract, which consists of increasing consulting engineering fees for construction related services. This work was quoted in the amount of $185,800 and would include all services related to construction inspections, oversight, record keeping, and documentation for the Midwest Lift Station and Lakeland Sewer Drive Project. A number of concerns were expressed relative to the engineering firm's work on the 2013 street projects, and questions were also raised regarding the proposed cost of these services. Following that, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to table the matter pending review by the incoming Public Works Director, Mr. Sean Christiansen.
Second.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to table the hearing rescheduling for, do we determine whether to reschedule?
Most of the next planned meeting, I'm sure.
After our new city engineer has reviewed it.
It's not a hearing that's being tabled.
The motion is just a table.
It's just a discussion of the item.
Okay. So it is a discussion of the item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number five was the 2014 improvement hearing having to be rescheduled. This is for information only. We were informed that inadequate time had been given to the process for mailing and publishing notices for our 2014 Improvement Project public hearing. At the previous council meeting, a hearing date had been recommended as March 17th. This date did not allow sufficient notification time required by statute. Staff was recommending that the improvement hearing be rescheduled to April 7th, 2014. After that, there was some discussion, and motion was made, seconded and passed to change the hearing for the 2014 Improvement Project to March, from March 17th to April 7th. The motion carried, and I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Does that need a motion?
It said for information only, but there's a motion.
It's best to do it within, in the bonding process, so let's continue.
Okay. The motion has been made by, second, the motion has been made and seconded to move the improvement hearing for the 2014 Improvement Project be rescheduled from March 17th to April 7th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Under old business, there were some comments from Councilmember Ammon. He noted that he had driven several of the streets included in the 2013 Improvement Project and had several concerns about elevations and drainage. It was suggested that the, again, incoming Public Works Director review those projects and offer his comments. The committee also discussed the proposed facilities planning process to be undertaken by the city and to be funded by the 2014 CIP. Mr. Ammon noted there were significant maintenance issues that existed on a number of municipal buildings and suggested that volunteer architectural contractor inspection services would be, could be used to keep the costs down. Under new business, our police chief informed us that the jail census as of March 11th was 73, and calls for service for the prior two weeks was 563, down a bit from the month before. If there are no questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee dated, reported, or dated March 11th, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number 13 will do the consideration of Civic Center Arena Special Event by On Sale Liquor License Holder Permit, KEC. Kevin, would you like to explain that to us, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, once again, the Civic Center Arena has been rented out to the West Central Builders Association, which is a not-for-profit organization that holds a builder's show there, and at the end of their first day, on March 29th, the licensed liquor holder, in this case, Candy Entertainment Center, plans to offer the alcohol just to the members after closing hours, and all the patrons have gone home from the show. But it still requires the adoption of a on-sale liquor license holder to carry out those activities. This plan has been approved by the Community Education and Recreation Board at their last meeting, and it is staff's recommendation that we approve this special event for on-sale liquor license for that March 29th activity.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the liquor license Civic Center Arena Special Events by On Sale Liquor License Holder, Candy Entertainment Center.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to correct that.
What did I say?
No, you're right. I made an error. It's March 17th, March 21 date on there is pending the approval of the Community and Recreation Board, so that should be a condition of this.
Pending.
Nope, it hasn't been held yet.
Approve it contingent upon their approval.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon community education and recreation approval. How's that sound?
Excellent.
Better. That would be a resolution because it's liquor, am I right?
Roll call for liquor.
Roll call. Is there any discussion, first of all? And then a roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Kevin, would you like to give us the consideration of the resolution to approve a new premises permit for Hundred Yard Club?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have an application for premise permit to allow pull tab activity by the Hundred Yard Club, Inc., and the application is pretty much a movement from, I believe, the Oaks out to the newer establishment, the Pep's Bar. We do no longer approve that every two years, like was passed, they stripped that law, and we just approve these for the initial placement of a pull tab operation. And it has been reviewed, and it's staff recommendation to approve this resolution to allow this premise permit to take place.
I'll move staff's recommendation to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to approve the premise, premise permit, and direct the city clerk treasurer to forward the same to the gambling control board. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Just clarification, so they're just going to have one, they're not going to be out at Oaks?
I believe that is true.
Okay.
And it's the first placement at Pep's, and we'll just have to review how that works after it's in place.
Could they have two? Can they? Or is it just one location?
No, I believe our hockey association has two, so you can have multiple. What they're going to, what their efforts were, they believe the most profit will come for their activity.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Hundred Yard Club, that's for the high school, right?
Well, Dionne Warren.
It is.
I'm going to say yes.
It's a football booster.
It is.
It's all football boosters.
I know it's at Pep's, and it's not for the West Central Mustangs.
Ah, okay, that.
Sponsors. It's for the high school.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Mr. Peterson, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of land owned by the city.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, this is an issue that was discussed at the previous council meeting, and there was inadvertently some incorrect advice given to the council regarding the need for a public hearing for the sale of land to Genio. The city's charter does in fact require that any sale or transfer of land require a public hearing, so staff is requesting that an ordinance be introduced that authorizes a sale of land to Genio Turkey Store, and that the public hearing be held at the April 7th, 2014 meeting.
Is that just for information?
No. That doesn't.
Requires action by the council.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made for staff's recommendation to hold a public hearing on.
April 7th.
April 7th.
April 7th.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I moved to amend the motion.
Go ahead.
I moved to amend the motion by adding the phrase, "subject to receipt by the city council of a satisfactory report from Hormel Foods Investor Relations Department cross-referencing the following list of public officials, full names, surnames, and immediate family members, as well as trusts for the benefit of said subjects, and the home and business addresses of said subjects against the company's database of stockholders registered on November 19th, 2013, and February 3rd, 2014, including the number of shares held by said subjects and share prices on the above-mentioned dates of record." I have copies here if any of you would like to have it. I'll second the motion for discussion.
Councilman Nelson.
Point of order, does this amendment apply to what we're doing with the motion?
I believe that it is. You're setting, your, your, the main motion is to set a hearing introducing this ordinance, which you have in front of you, for that hearing. Mr. Ammon is amending this ordinance with a document that's in writing there for another So it would be appropriate if you like his amendment. Get one to the city attorney for a quick review.
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
I'd like the city attorney to tell us exactly what this is asking for. Is this.
Thank you.
Confused completely with the amendment.
Would you care to do that after you've read it?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it appears that this amendment would be making the motion to introduce this ordinance and set it for hearing, subject to receiving a report from Hormel that would apparently disclose any stock held by members of, page, looks like the city council and other city staff members. Is that, that correct summary, Mr. Ammon?
It's correct.
It goes, also appears to go beyond city staff, two members of the, the EDC director, members of that board, the planning commission, everyone listed on the second page of this motion. I have to say, I don't know if that would be enforceable on Hormel, I don't know if that's something they could disclose or are authorized to disclose, that would require research. I guess what I would, for the council's information, you have a conflict of interest policy that you passed last year that I prepared for your consideration, and I guess the thing to understand about it is there is two primary areas of law here, talking about council member conflicts of interest. Actually, it applies not just to council members, but to staff members who are authorized to take part in a decision like this. So anytime the city council is considering a contract where the city would be contracting with another party, if any member of the city council or any staff members who are authorized to take part in that process of making a recommendation to the council has a personal financial interest in that contract such that they would stand to benefit from the action the city has taken, not only does a council member or staff person who has that interest have to refrain from participating, the city council, as a general rule, simply cannot enter into that contract. That's what we're talking about. That's a statutory requirement. You have a charter provision on point that prohibits a city council member, or I believe a staff person, from having a substantial financial interest in the contract. Those sources of law were all reviewed by me, by our office, when we prepared your conflict of interest policy for your review. You passed it. The policy is consistent with the charter, it's consistent with the statute. The policy sets forth a procedure for the council and staff members to follow if they think they might have a conflict of interest. They have to disclose it and refrain from participation unless the city attorney tells them that it's okay. Now, obviously, in this case, I don't know if this is what this specific amendment pertains to, but we have had one council member make a disclosure to me, to the public, at several points in this process. I've looked at it, I've reviewed the charter, I've reviewed statute, I've reviewed the conflict of interest policy that this council passed, the council member followed that policy, and my conclusion out of our office is that there is no financial interest here for that council member. So I have advised him, and I've advised the council before, and I'll stand by it, that there is no disqualifying conflict of interest for that council member. There's no reason he can't participate in the decision, and beyond that, there is no reason the council can't enter into this contract, because if there was a financial interest, a personal financial interest, the council simply couldn't enter into that contract whether the council member participated or not. That's not what we're dealing with here. I guess I would add the purpose for both the statute and the charter provision and the policy you ultimately passed last year is to recognize situations where a council member, someone who's making policy for the city, may not have the public interest first and foremost, and stands to benefit from a personal interest that is distinct from the interests of the public, and that's certainly not the case here, from what we know. Last point on this is if anyone, I mean, the conflict of interest policy requires a council member to disclose, it requires a staff person that's involved in this to disclose if they have any interest in this. There's only been one matter that has been disclosed by one council member, that's been dealt with, that's been addressed. That is not a disqualifying conflict of interest. I think if there are any questions about it, the public can just understand. I think if there are any questions about it, the public can, or just understand that everyone involved in this matter for the council or for staff has an obligation to disclose if there is a conflict of interest, or if they have a personal interest in this contract.
I might ask you... Go ahead. You know, we all know who this is directed at. It's me. And, and how many times do we have to hear the same thing? This is getting old. I've had discussions with the city attorney. I have disclosed, I have signed the, the policy, you know, on conflict of interest. I don't have one. Let's move on. This is just really frustrating.
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In layman's terms, Mr. Scott, basically what, you know, this is saying is that they're asking Hormel Foods to look at, to cross-reference these names to see if they're indicated in any ownership of shares for Hormel. Is that what basically saying?
Seems to be.
Okay. Now, our conflict of interest policy and the charter's conflict of interest deals with us, city staff, city council, but I see that Mr. Ammon is listed on here, everybody else that's been in this process, the Economic Development Commission, EDC Ops Board, and the Planning Commission. Do they fall under the same jurisdiction of the, the conflict of interest? I mean, if the EDC Ops Board was all in favor for, of it, and half of them have ownership in Hormel's stock, shouldn't that be mentioned too? I mean, I, I understand his concern, because it isn't just, I don't think it's just Mr. Anderson that this thing is directed. It appears to be anybody that had something to do with this deal, the, the land transfer to, I believe it's Jots, which is owned by Hormel.
Correct.
But are they under the same policy? Do they fall under that, or do they have to have their own?
The EDC Board would not be under the city council's policy that you adopted. However, I believe they're still subject to the same primary sources of law. They're still, maybe not the charter requirement, but they're certainly subject to state statute on this.
Wouldn't it be prudent, though, for, for those people to maybe sign off on something, a statement saying that, you know, we, we don't have a financial interest in it, in Hormel? Because they've all had a part of this deal. They've all been part of it. That's my question. Wouldn't it be prudent for them to sign off on it too?
I don't know, councilmember. What I can tell you is that anyone with the EDC that was facilitating a contractual arrangement with the EDC that they were interested in would have the same obligation to disclose a conflict of interest and not participate in that contractual matter.
How about the Planning Commission? Somewhere along the line, they've been involved in this also. The, the EDC, the Joint Powers Board involves three of us council people and then three from the county. And, I mean, I'm assuming the county has their own conflict of interest also, they must have it. But I can see his concern in wanting some people to sign off, you know. Transparency is, is the big word today from government to the public, and there's just been, there's been a lack of it from Washington to the state to the county, the city. I mean, the government just keeps rolling and, and the public sometimes doesn't get informed. So I understand his, his concern for having these people, I don't know if we need to throw in Hormel to do that, but somewhere along the line, maybe they should sign off on it. It would be pretty simple. Really would. I mean, just like Mr. Anderson, they just come forward and say, hey, I've got, you know, X amount of shares in Hormel, or they're in my retirement plan, or whatever. It'd be pretty easy for them to do that. It wouldn't take much but a few emails, you know, and that's 24 hours, it could probably be done. So I do understand his, his, his wish for transparency, these people that have been involved in this process.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
I'm totally confused. This is a City of Womer transaction. I mean, how could you ask Hormel to disclose who their stockholders are? Wouldn't that be, I mean, there's data privacy, there's financial privacy. I just, I don't understand what the real issue here is here, because we've gone through this multiple times.
I would...
And it's back to the same, to the same thing. This is very disappointing.
Thank you. I would think that, if I may answer that, I think that what we're talking about here is trust.
I think you're exactly right, and I think it's time this council trusts our city attorney and trusts our staff and trusts this community.
And what do I do from here, quite frankly?
We have amendment to the main motion.
Okay.
When the discussion is done on Mr. Ammon's amendment, he must take a vote.
Okay. Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not real sure what, what's asked for either, but are you looking for people on this list and asking if they've bought Hormel shares in the last two years? Or do we have to go back to our IRAs and our own Roth and find out what companies are in there and what shares they have? I'm sure your wife, my sister, doesn't know what Delta buys for their, her retirement plan. I don't know on mine. I'd have to call my wife, 'cause she takes care of it for me, so...
Councilman Ammon?
Well, to answer your question, the amendment, Mr. Fagerly states November 19th, 2013, and February 3rd, 2014. From those dates.
Well, I mean, they do trade on the open market, so if it's a big deal, I'm gonna rush out this week and buy a whole bunch, so...
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just, again, I'd like to ask the city attorney, is this even legal to request? I mean, could we even request this? I mean, this is like, how could you ask this?
Councilwoman Nelson, I honestly don't know if this is enforceable. I don't know if this is a request that Hormel would legally be able to comply with or not. That's something I'd have to look into. I obviously didn't, I haven't had time to look at it before this motion being made.
Can't we do anything on a voluntary basis?
I believe that question was asked last time and it was silent. I can tell you too, I have mutual funds, I can't tell you whether I do. I don't see what this is about. I don't, this, this is like a witch hunt. We've had this question, it's been answered by the city attorney multiple times, and we're back saying the same thing one more time.
Councilman Anderson?
You know, in my opinion, this, this is gonna just bog things down. You know, I think there's gonna be a big legal battle as to whether or not it's even, whether they can disclose and how long it's gonna take them to disclose. This is just something to bog the process down. And again, it's totally unnecessary.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask who typed this up. Mr. Ammon, I know you had this document with you at the last city council meeting. So who put this document together?
Ms. Nelson, this whole issue is about honesty, integrity, transparency, and good ethics. That's it.
So you're...
We're dealing with, excuse me, we're dealing with a first time ever, this community is dealing with a transaction of over a million dollars of, of assets of the City of Womer, land, to be given away in a buy-down program to Genio Foods. I think that this type of thing should be asked prior to any time we have a vote. I am, I am, and I might want to also add that, through years being in the city council, and we've all been here for a number of years, most of us, I hear the negativity and the lack of trust of government. This is one way that I can say, and I think that the constituents would feel, if this is opened up, it should be transparent. It should be not gray, it should be crystal clear. And if there's nothing to hide, then why not do it?
Councilman, Councilwoman Nelson?
Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, thank you. I don't know why you're hiding behind, if you are not in support of economic development, why are you hiding behind conflict of interest? This has been open and transparent. This transaction is based off from policies and, and that were adopted, that the staff is following. We are not doing anything different than the policies and procedures that this council put into place. So don't hide behind trying to blame someone for having a conflict of interest...
Point of order.
...when it's already been clarified...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
We do not have a conflict of interest.
Point of order, a personal attack is not called for. This is not a personal attack. I'm looking after the constituents, in the best interest of the constituents.
Mayor Yanis, would you please keep control of the meeting?
And I'd also like to mention that this isn't the first time, I don't know why everything at time I bring something up, you're opposed to it, but...
This is inappropriate.
Yeah. No, this is not appropriate. This is showing clarity, transparency, honesty, and integrity. All those things that we took an oath of office to, to show. Why are we opposed, why would you be opposed to anything that's gonna show that you're standing behind your oath of office? What's there to hide?
I'm not hiding anything.
Go ahead. Councilman Anderson? We're not trying to hide anything. You know, how many times do I need to disclose it? What I do object to is that you asking for my financial records. That is of no business to anyone. That's my business. We were, we, we do not have to disclose our financial records. I've disclosed that, that I am a retiree of Hormel, and I have some minimal amount of stock. What more can I do? And the city attorney has said, okay, it's not a significant amount, it's a minimus, I think is the word that he used. And that's what, that's what our policy says, that's what the charter says. So why?
Well, first of all, Mr. Anderson, I haven't, I have the utmost respect for your position and you as an individual, so this is not an attack on you personally. As you know, I called you on this issue before, and I commended you on your openness to divulge this information. There's other people that are listed on this list that I, I think would show, show our community a clear, transparent, honest approach to what we're about to do, and I think this should be handled if we should have another stock-owned company in the future. Furthermore, in the state statutes and also in our city statutes, which our city statute is a little weaker than the state statutes, and I understand the state statutes trumps our, our current policy we have, there's a word in there that's very important, it's called substantial. Who's gonna clarify that and by whose terms? To some people, $1,000 might be substantial, to others, it might not. This clarifies it. And again, this is no attack on any individual, or against the city, or against what Ms. Nelson calls anti-growth or anti-business. I am a small businessman, I just want transparency. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, if I may.
Thank you. Maybe we just make this thing simple and send an email out to these people for the, for the benefit of Mr. Ammon's request, instead of having Hormel do, just sending them an email stating, you know, please declare if you have any, or substantial, or any interest in Hormel Foods that you know of. If we don't get any back, it's, should be, you know, we'd state on the email, if you don't send this back, we'll assume that you don't have any. I mean, it'd be pretty simple, wouldn't Mr. Scott do, do that?
That sounds pretty simple. I would also point out, they are under that obligation right now, under state law and under the conflict of interest policy. If any council member or staff person stands to benefit from the council entering into a contract with Genio, whether by reason of a relationship with Genio or Hormel, they're under an obligation to disclose that under your existing policies and state law and the city charter.
Councilmember Nelson, did you have a question or comment?
Just, I still am confused with what this has to do with the motion regarding having a public hearing.
Let's vote on the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me?
Let's vote on the amendment.
Tell me what the amendment is.
Well, it's virtually this full reading. Would you like me to do the reading, or...
You can do it.
The original motion is to introduce an ordinance and call for a hearing on the ordinance. The amendment is to add a clause to that ordinance that says, "The action is subject to the receipt by the city council of a satisfactory report from Hormel Foods Investor Relations Department, cross-referencing the following list of public officials," which, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I won't read, "as well as trusts for the benefit of said subjects, and the home and business addresses of said subjects against the company's database of stockholders registered on November 19th, 2013, and February 3, 2014, including the number of shares held by said subjects and share prices on the above-mentioned dates of record."
Thank you. And when we have an amendment, do we take a roll call, or a...
It is your option. If you can hear a clear count, you need not. If it's muddled, you need to clarify it.
Let's have a, a motion first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
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 And those have it.
Okay. The main motion is now before you, setting a hearing on...
April 7th.
April 7th.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Councilman Christiansen?
He can announce that it, for my comment, he just have a comment that pertains to this.
Do I announce what?
It passed.
It passed.
It passed, okay.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if the vote that we took two weeks ago still stands, or do we have to re-vote after the public hearing on April 7th?
Councilmember Christiansen, the vote last week was simply to authorize staff and the council to work to prepare a purchase agreement and write a first refusal agreement for the council's consideration. It was gonna have to come back to the council anyway. There's nothing about that vote that it isn't enforceable. I mean, I, staff and myself have in fact pursued preparing that agreement. It will be coming back to the council probably at your next meeting.
So the public hearing, you know, if it, if it has any effect on any council person's feelings about the, the subject, then it would be when that agreement comes before us?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's correct. Thank you.
And the, go ahead, Councilman Fagerly?
Can I just make a comment? Staff will be sending out copies of the purchase agreements tomorrow to all the council people.
Okay.
So they'll be able to have it and look it over for next Thursday's community development.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we voted on that and that passed, right?
That's done, sir. We're on old business.
Old business. Is, is there any old business that we should talk about? Councilman Ammon?
One issue, I missed. Earlier this, this evening, we had testimony from the food shelf on the amount of people that we're dealing with in the community that have needs for food, or run into financial It's important information to have that, and what I'd like to do after listening to this, and also reviewing our business subsidy policy, which we recently unanimously approved, we have in that policy, under a section two, or paragraph two, bottom of the last, last sentence says, "Where creation of new jobs is required, those jobs shall have a wage floor of $12 per hour." After listening to what she said, it sounds like anybody working for $12 an hour is eligible for a lot of assistance and meets the poverty level in our community. After, after thinking of this, I would just like consideration to discuss the issue of the $12 wage platform that's currently under policy to maybe state something more similar to the issue of two times the minimum wage, excluding benefits. Therefore, what we're gonna be doing, promoting industrial, the industrial park with industrial paying jobs, is we're at least getting...
with industrial-paying jobs, is we're at least getting, we're subsidizing taxpayers' dollars or subsidizing, or taxpayers' assets are subsidizing a company that is paying wages that are not on the poverty level. And I think that $12 an hour right now meets all poverty requirement, all poverty assistance programs that everybody in this room pays for with their tax dollars. And I just think it should be reconsidered, and if you could move that to the appropriate committee, staff, I think it's worthwhile discussing. And again, we all live in our own bubble. We don't see the disparity out there, and this should be a primary concern. The $12 an hour wage platform is not a livable wage. You're dependent on government. And whether or not we want to dabble into that is another story, but I would prefer, if you would consider my, or take my comments into consideration, we'll refer to the appropriate committee, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
I believe that the dollar amounts she was referring to were $9 and $10 an hour when she was referencing that. Also, just, I think we had a discussion regarding this and looked at what other communities are doing, what the state is doing with the recommendation with this. Did we not recently just do this? And we just voted on this not that long ago, did we not?
I believe it was in May of last, I believe, looking at Mr. Peterson for some confirmation, I think it was in May of 2013 that this was before the Community Development Committee and the wage was looked at. It certainly can be looked at again. I mean, certainly happy to, we can do that again if that's what the council wishes to do, or as the Community Development Committee wishes to do. But it was reviewed in May of 2013.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just, I'd like to ask Mr. Peterson if he remembered where those figures came from at that time.
Councilmember Nelson, members of the council, the simple answer is that the committee adjusted wages upward by approximately 10% from the previous policy. We had provided examples of other communities. We had provided examples of what the state has for local wage rates, average wages for different types of industries. And following the discussion, it was a simple motion to change it from $11 an hour to $12 an hour. And that does include, that figure, the way the state counts it, would include benefits. Typically, when we look at it locally, we look at it without benefits.
Thank you.
I offer this, should we consider waiting until the legislators in Washington make a decision as to what they're going to do?
Mayor Yanis, I think it all ties together. I think we've got a number of things on our plate now that we should probably deal with and bring to a conclusion. And, you know, I see this as a way we're going to get bogged down short-term on some things. It's definitely a discussion worth having, but I think the minimum wage discussions at both the state and the federal level could play into what ultimately gets decided by a number of communities.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other than, I'd just like to say Bruce is right on with the comments and the discussions going on in the state legislature and our representatives in Washington. When I, the research that I have done looked at the poverty level in the Canoia County and what's eligible at the county office building is quite shocking. And I just think we should maybe reconsider what we're doing, or at least reevaluate it and look at it from a different perspective with data from the county and what meets poverty-level guidelines. And I don't care what other communities are doing. I sure don't want to be supportive of low-paying jobs in this community being subsidized by tax dollars. Thank you.
We'll move on to new business. Is there any new business? Councilman Aman, did you have something that you wanted to bring up on new business?
At this time, I think I've probably worn out my welcome. I'll wait till next two weeks from now. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have something that I would say is effective today, just for information only. We have sold our business. And the new owner has already taken over today. And many of you have called or stopped by at the shop that we have to visit with me about various items. But just to let you know that I can now be reached on my home phone, which is listed on the website, city website. I have an office at City Hall and would be more than happy to meet with you there to discuss any issues that you may have. And on a personal note, I would like to thank my wife and son, Mark, for stepping up to the plate and basically running the business since I took the office. So thank you very much. Finance committee, announcement of council meeting dates. Is there any other new business, by the way? Hearing none?
I thought Councilmember Nelson had an item.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
No.
New business?
Yeah.
Committee meetings.
Committee meetings. Finance committee meeting.
The finance committee meeting will be on Monday, March 31st. That's two weeks from tonight. We've got an extra week this month, so we're going to be meeting on the 31st.
Public clerks, Councilman Christiansen?
We will be meeting April 1st, Tuesday.
Of the same week?
No. Yes.
Yes, correct.
And labor relations, Councilman Aman?
I believe it will be next week, Wednesday, if I'm mistaken.
It is, but I think if every, we could also move that to, I didn't realize it was the fifth week. If you would like to move it to April 2nd, you could do that as well. It's up to you.
I'd just soon get it done with. Next week, Wednesday, which would be the?
26th.
Yeah.
Wednesday, 26th. Community development, Councilman Fagerly?
Thursday, March 27th, 4:45, City Hall.
Are there any calls for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.